I would like to call the special October Town Meeting to order. First, if you would please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The town clerk, Ms. Sloan, informs me we have a quorum. Thank you all for coming out. Thank God the Red Sox aren't playing tonight. It's good to have you all here. As always, we'll go over the rules here. The rules that the meeting will operate under are found in Town Meeting Time, which is the handbook of parliamentary law for town meetings. So please pull out your copy and follow along. Also, as we've been doing the last couple of meetings, I would like an initial vote to allow me to declare either a two-thirds or a nine-tenths vote if I believe that we far exceeded that. If any vote is challenged, then obviously we'll go to a vote with the voting cards that you were given on the way in. But it makes things much easier if I can just declare that it's a two-thirds vote or a nine-tenths vote for the purposes of complying with state law. So do I have a motion? Second? Thank you. All those in favor of this rule, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Thank you very much. You know, before we get going, I just wanted to -- it's been my practice to remember some of the people that we've lost since we had our last meeting. And, you know, I just want to highlight one, and it's a significant one. It's Charlie Mann, who -- this is our first town meeting in a very, very long time without him. He started his public service back in 1963 when he got elected to the school board. He went on to be a state rep. He was obviously the moderator for many years here. So stretching from 1963 to 2012, it's a tremendous commitment to his town. He was a great friend to me, one of the very first people I got to know when I moved to town. And I always enjoy to talk to him. So if we could just have a moment of silence in his memory. Thank you very much. And I also want to point out something that grabbed our attention last week, and that was the lockdown that we had over at the schools and the public safety problems that we had with the home invasion. I just want to thank our public safety officials, Chief Mitch and Chief Thompson, and also Dr. Ruth Gilbert-Witner, who's here with us today. My daughter was on a bus over at the high school when it all happened, and I think everybody would agree with me that everything was handled in a very professional, well-done manner. So thank you very much. Alrighty, so we will start with Article One. Article One, Mr. Mitchell.
I move the town vote to transfer $6,999.16 from free cash and $1,516.8 from recreation retained earnings to pay unpaid bills from fiscal year 2016.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Mitchell.
There are a few unpaid bills from various departments which were received after the end of fiscal year 2016. Requires a nine-tenths vote.
Thank you, Mr. Mitchell. As you just pointed out, requires a nine-tenths vote. So all those in favor -- oh, any discussion of Article One? The question, if you could, in the future, thank you very much for stating your name and your address, but if you could please go to the microphone. It's a little hard to hear up here. The question was, how much would be coming from recreation?
It's around $1,400, $1,400, $1,500 total.
Mr. Blous.
Hello?
$1,516.8.
And could you tell me what that would be to cover for expenses?
Mr. Mitchell?
Family camping weekend ad, lifeguard store reimbursement, Joanne Blous, CHIA questions.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Any further questions or discussion? All those in favor of Article One, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The ayes have it by a nine-tenths vote. Article Two, Mr. Scott.
I move the town vote to raise an appropriate --
I don't think your microphone is on, sir.
Okay. Does it reach?
Oh, it doesn't.
I move the town vote to raise an appropriate $122,400 to supplement appropriations previously voted at the annual town meeting of May 2016 for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2016, for various town departments as printed in the warrant.
Second.
Seconded. What I'm going to do, much like we do in May for the larger budget, is I'm going to call out each item. The far-left column here. If no one has an objection or a question, I'll say, "Accepted." If you do have a question or an objection, please say, "Hold," and then we'll come back to it for an explanation. Alright? So, Item One. Accepted. Item Two. Accepted. Item Three. Accepted. Item Four. Accepted. Item Five. Accepted. Is there any comment or question on the article as a whole? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article Two signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Article Three, Chief Thompson.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator. Ladies and gentlemen, I move the town vote to transfer $300,000 from the ambulance account purchasing ambulance medical equipment and a power stretcher system.
It's seconded. Chief Thompson.
These funds will be used to purchase an F-550 ambulance, medical equipment, and a power-loading stretcher system.
Are there any questions for the chief? All those in favor of Article Three signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Article Three is adopted. Article Four, Mr. Dugan.
I move the town vote to raise and appropriate $25,000 to be added to stabilization.
Seconded.
Mr. Dugan.
This money will be used to increase the stabilization fund. Stabilization fund is a mechanism for setting aside money either for unforeseen needs or for capital projects. Such a fund is intended to equalize the effects of capital expenditures over time and to provide for a rainy day fund. The dollar amount appropriated under this article will increase the stabilization fund to $1,094,080, which represents 5% of the operating budget. The town's target has been to maintain close to 5%, which is the industry standard minimum amount for stabilization funds, as recommended by our auditors. It will help maintain a positive bond rating for future borrowing purposes.
Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article Four signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Article Four is adopted. Article Five, Mr. McGann.
I move the town vote to raise and appropriate $10,000 to be added to the regional schools' capital stabilization fund as established by the October 2014 special town meeting.
Seconded.
Seconded. Mr. McGann.
This stabilization fund sets aside funds for the exclusive use of paying for capital improvements to the Hanson School buildings and the Whitman-Hanson Regional High School.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor of Article Five signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Article Five is adopted. Article Six, Mr. Howard.
I vote the town vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to transfer $300,000 from free cash and to borrow $1.5 million for the demolition of -- redemiation of the former Plymouth County Hospital building.
Do we have a second?
Seconded.
Seconded. Mr. Howard.
These funds will be used for the engineering renovation of the hazardous materials and demolition of the former Plymouth County Hospital. Estimated cost, $1.5 million.
$1.8 million.
$1.8 million, student.
Yes, and just to clarify, it's $1.8 million, but some is coming from borrowing, some from free cash. Mr. Howard, did you have the presentation that you wanted to do?
I don't know if they hear.
Yes, she does.
Would you like to do that now? Okay, please.
Yeah.
Can you bring down the screens and the presentation? While that's happening, I may disappear halfway through.
We're gonna see this?
Less than that. We're going to have a very short, maybe 10-minute presentation about what's going on with the Plymouth County Hospital. Perhaps it'll answer some of the questions people have. So I'll reappear in about 10 minutes.
So my name is Mary Ann Demasiom at 552 Indian Head Street, and I'm a member of the final Plymouth County Hospital reuse committee. And we've done a couple of PowerPoint presentations, one at the selectmen meeting in June and another one this week. We are not going into a full-blown presentation, no fears. We have three slides with some words on them and about 10 slides, 10, 12 slides with some pictures to give you an idea of what the hospital looks like. So just general info, many of you here know about the Plymouth County Hospital grounds. It's 55 acres up on High Street and bordered by Pierce Avenue. We've had the land up there since 1999. There've been a lot of studies over the years, over the 16-year period, and they were all put together into a feasibility report. And that's where our committee started, when we began work last winter. There was a community survey. There's a lot of good information about what should be done with the land, what should be done with buildings. One of the major issues is demolition of the old hospital building. And there've been several town committees that have grappled with this over the years, and it's been a very challenging issue, and we're trying to work our way through it. Next, please.
Can you put the lights down a little more, please?
I'm gonna take a second to get my laser pointer. Alright, it fell apart, so we'll just have to look. So the pink line up there is High Street, and the purple line is the outline of the Plymouth County Hospital grounds. So it was divided into three parcels, and I'm not sure when. Someone who's been here doing this longer might know. I'm going in backwards order. Parcel Three are trails and meadow. You see the long, thin strip of land, and then the word meadow. That's Parcel Three. And that is up toward Town Hall and Wompatac. Parcel Two is where the food pantry is, and there are a few different existing buildings. And you see the arrow. There's land, there's water tower, there's the Bonny House, there's the old superintendent's residence, there's some old shed, garage. And then it's a U shape around Parcel One. I believe this was, if someone can correct me, was it divided when you were, when Barron was looking at this property?
Just real quickly, Phil Clements, 46 Main Street. I'm also on the committee. The last previous standing committee, one of the things they accomplished was to propose dividing the large parcel into three parcels, which we see here, basically for development, for municipal, and for open space. And so were the beneficiaries of that. That has been approved by the planning board and is recorded in the registry of deeds. So that's how those three parcels came into existence, probably like eight or nine years ago at the most.
Thanks, Phil. And then we see the old hospital building section at the bottom. You can see the buildings on there. Next slide. So this is just a little more detailed. The old hospital building plus the land is eight acres. At this point, the building is beyond repair. A number of years ago, it looked like it could be salvaged, but the time has not been its friend. So I have some pictures of that you can see afterwards, and that's what the topic of this is this evening. Parcel Two, you have the food pantry, Beekeepers Association, there's a community garden, there's water tower. And the suggestions from all the studies and surveys has been that would be a good place for different community-oriented uses, park, playground, recreation trails, dog park, amphitheater. Only suggestions. You know, that would be a further step later. Parcel Three, we showed you the strip of land and meadow, and that's 22 acres. And most, I think almost all of the reports and studies said, recommended this land for open space or conservation. So next. So just some pictures. This was last spring, and I think April, one day it rained. We had a walk out there. Trail on the left, and then the meadow is up toward Town Hall. Similar trail in a different season. There it is on the left in the winter, I mean, just last weekend. And then there's some woods. On rainy Saturday, we had a walk on Saturday, and Phil and I were the only ones that showed up because it was raining. But we had a great walk in the woods. Next. Food pantry, probably people are very familiar with this and the renovation that happened a couple of years ago. Over to the right, there's another building you can just see, and that has Beekeepers Association in it. Next. This is a community garden that was done by an Eagle Scout. Behind, there's wooded land. Over to the left, I didn't put all the things in here, but there is Bonny House, the water tower, potential space for a second water tower, which after the summer, people may be very interested in. Next. Okay, so this is, the hospital is, it's almost like an E with three sections coming out, and this is the annex. It was a fourth section that was in, had collapsed more, it collapsed recently, so you see it there. On September 28th, you see the groups coming in for an emergency demolition because of the safety issues. So that was on last Wednesday, and then Saturday, it looked like this. It was demolished, but there is, the materials were left there. There's still, decontamination has to happen because there are some hazardous materials in there, like asbestos, and I believe other things too. So that was done, but it remains, the rest of the hospital still remains. Next. So this is the back, sort of the northwestern side. And that's part of the front also. This is the back, looks like what was just destroyed, but this is another piece that's not in good shape. Next one. That's the other part of that one. And then I think we have some interior shots. Can just go through those. And you can see that there are people that go in these buildings, leave their signs behind, and that's part of the concern for liability and safety if people are in these buildings, and we just had the other one collapse. And then I thought we would end on this one. The graffiti says, "We can learn to love again." So the details of the amounts, I will leave to other people who know more about it in terms of how much it will cost to do this. It is estimated $1.8 million. I think they have a little more information. We have a lot more information than this. We're not going to do that now, but one of the ideas and important things is we have looked for some options so it would not cost the taxpayer. And the building has been in the way, a hindrance. We've talked to some developers, we've looked for different kinds of funds, we've talked to, we've just, we've asked around, and we've had some people out here. One possibility that looks good from our committee is a solar field that would bring in some money for the town. We wouldn't have to sell the land. So there are some options, but the presence of the old hospital building is a real hindrance to moving forward. Thanks.
Thank you. Mary Ann. Would anybody else like to comment or discuss this? Yes, Mr. Clements.
Phil Clements, 46 Main Street. Again, just to supplement this, perhaps all of you saw on the way in, there were some photos and a handout sheet called Frequently Asked Questions About the Plymouth County Hospital. We've tried to condense 17 years into one side of one page, but we hope this is helpful, and we hope that it helps people to decide how to vote.
Any other questions or comments? Mr. Norton.
John Norton, 31 Indian Path. Just a quick question, does the, am I on here?
We can hear you, although it should be raised up.
Okay.
There we go.
That help? Yep. I just wanted to know if the $1.8 million included removing the foundation so that somebody could actually build there, or are we doing this in steps? So we're gonna take the building down, and then before anybody could actually use the land, we'd have to take the foundation down.
Would someone like to address that? Yes, sir.
Al Hanscom, 187 Beechwood Road. I've done the estimate for the town, and yes, it does include the full removal of the entire basement.
Mr. Soper.
Hi, David Soper, 176 High Street. Hi. I was on the former Plymouth County Reuse Committee, and not more than a year ago, I had pushed for at least investigating whether we could find a developer, and of course, times have changed rapidly. I have over 385-foot of frontage at stake here. I am in a butter, and that is why you've probably never heard me talk about this as a selectman. But I can tell you this, each day, each month, each week, each year, we let this go on, it just costs more. Times have changed. There are developers out there that aren't willing to take chances like they used to. It is time that we take this building down and move on, and let Hanson close this chapter. Thank you.
Ms. Marini.
Kathleen Marini, 181 Union Street. One of my questions was already answered. I was wondering where the $1,008 estimate came from. I assume when the time comes that will be put out for bid?
Mr. Young.
Yeah, this is the first step. The $1,008 is based on the engineer's estimate of what that building would cost to be demolished. Once this town meeting votes the $1,008, then we will be proceeding with an RFP that will be advertised. We'll have bidders bid on this building. The cost may come in at $1 million, it may come in at $1,005,000, it may come in at $1,008,000. So whatever that's going to, let's say it came in at $1,003,000. We're taking $300,000 out of free cash, we'll only be borrowing $1 million. That would be one example. Plus the fact that the Board of Selectmen has been active in gathering together all the tax title properties that have been accumulating for the last 15 or 20 years, the need to go back on the tax rolls. We're gonna EMAC that property to be sold, and once those properties are auctioned off, the proceeds from those properties, that one-time funding that the town will have in will go to reduce, further reduce the bonded indebtedness on tearing down the hospital. Plus, we often, always, we're gonna be selling the Streeter House that's right on High Street as well, and the proceeds from that will go to reduce the proceeds of that bond. So the impact of borrowing the $1.5 million would be about an average of, say, $83 a year for the next five years for the average homeowner. That's based on the $1.5. But that amount could very well be a lot less than the $1.5 in borrowing, applying those things that I just said.
Okay, thank you. My other question was, and I should have asked this at the beginning of the meeting, I noticed you're taking $300,000 from free cash. What is our total of free cash?
We anticipated that question. And the total of free cash at the moment is $1,631,566.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Palaigre.
Mr. Moderator, thank you. Joe Palaigre, 72 Lakeside Terrace. I just wanted to understand, there's hazardous material up there, and I just wanted to know what the breakdown was, if possible, what the cost is of removing that hazardous material
I have it in a couple of line items here, so I'll have to add it up here. The asbestos abatement activities, not including the off-site management of the co-mingled asbestos demolition debris, is $270,000. The estimated volume of co-mingled asbestos and building demolition debris is approximately 600,000. So it's about 870,000 of the total is related to the asbestos. The buildings in certain areas are in such poor condition that conventional abatement can't occur, so we have to co-mingle both, and that increases the volume. One thing I will add, and this I think is important to understand, when we first did the estimate back in 1999 for demolition of the hospital, it was $1 million, and it's $1.8 million now. That's what happens when these buildings get into further states of deterioration, and you can't do conventional demolition. So it becomes much more costly to dispose of that material. But that takes care of that. There are a couple of other things that I'll mention just briefly. There are PCBs in various sections of the building, particularly in the caulkings, so that has also added to increase the price of the demolition.
Thank you, Mr. Hanscom. And I just want to thank Mr. Clements for the FAQ sheet, that was very nicely done.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, oh, before I begin, this does require a two-thirds vote. All those in favor of Article Six signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it by a two-thirds vote. Before we move on to Article Seven, just a few more pieces of housekeeping. As of 7:35, we had 118 registered voters check in, well above our quorum. And I also was asked by the selectmen to point out that out in the lobby, there is a poster with some information about the highway barn, which, if you could, take a look at after we conclude our business? Thank you. Article Seven, Mr. Young.
Mr. Moderator, ladies and gentlemen, I move that the town vote to transfer $15,000 from free cash to the 200th anniversary committee account.
Do we have a second? Seconded. Mr. Young.
These funds will be used to start the process for events commemorating Hanson's 200th anniversary, estimated amount of $15,000. Hanson was incorporated as a township in 1820 when it broke away from the West, it was once the West Parish of Pembroke, became the town of Hanson in 1820. And 2020 will commemorate the 200th anniversary of the town of Hanson.
Any questions or comments?
Jim Hickey, 66 Perry Ave. I've got a couple of questions. My first one would be to the Finance Committee. They voted four to one not to recommend the $15,000, and I'd like to know why.
Mr. Dugan.
Yeah. Part of the recommendation was, as discussion happened with the committee, was the additional planning and getting a good idea of what we were planning, what the costs were going to be, what the appropriate amount would be, as opposed to just what seemed to be a starting point of a number of $15,000.
Mr. Hickey.
I'm sorry. My other question was, and I don't want to seem like I don't want it, I actually do want it, and I would probably end up on that committee. I actually do want it and I would probably end up on that committee, but at Hanson 175, I was wondering how much that cost, if anybody could give me that information from 21 years ago and how much is left in that account?
I can tell you we have 4,500 left in the account. The activity, some of the activities that I would anticipate that happened at 145, there was a, it was a very nice parade, encompassed most of the towns in Plymouth County. We'll be competing with the Town of Plymouth who's, who the same year will be celebrating their 400th Anniversary, so we want to get started early because 15,000 is good seed money to start. There'll probably be, also be some fund, some fundraisers held between now and 2020 to raise more funds. There's usual, usually a 200th Anniversary Ball that goes along with that and other activities as well. So we'll be, we'll be planning this, that's why we're getting started a little early here, four years in advance to plan it, but this is a good start off seed money and the town's contribution to what is going to be a fantastic event in the year 2020.
So we don't know what 175 costs and where it's four years from now we're going to be, or with Article 7 asking for 15,000 this year, is there going to be another article next year asking for another 15,000?
You know, actually, maybe I could shed some light on it. The, the idea to, to start the stabilization fund early, it actually came out of a conversation I had with the town administrator over the summer. It just seemed like these things creep up on you and if you don't start putting some money aside, we'll be left with, with no funds to celebrate whatsoever. So basically, the law allows towns to set aside a stable, a revolving account is what it ends up being, that we can then deposit more money in as time goes on, we can hold fundraisers, whatnot, and then plan according to what we have available. But yeah, it'll be up to future town meetings to see what else gets appropriated, if anything.
There will be a 200th Anniversary Committee appointed and then once they get started, they'll be able to anticipate all those things that you talked about and we'll have a better idea of what this is actually going to cost and how much it's going to cost between fundraisers and town contributions.
Okay, I guess, so no one on the stage can tell me what Hanson 175 cost and the approximate amount that we have left in that account is 4,500.
Well, let me see, Kathy Kaczynski is in North Carolina, I know she was on it. Lila Coyle is in a rest home and other than that, I think the other three people have died. So I don't think there's anyone here who can.
So then that's why the Finance Committee voted four to one not to recommend the 15,000?
I have no idea what's in their minds.
Mr. Moderator, again, just from our perspective, it was, is 15,000 by four years appropriate? What's the, the planning? Is it fireworks? Is it a parade? This is just a case of not wanting any surprises. If we're going to plan early for it, then at least let's have round figures. But yes, to your original question, I would expect this to be set aside over a period of years rather than coming to the town all at once.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article 7 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay.
Nay.
The ayes have it, Article 7 is adopted. Article 8, Mr. Weeks.
Good evening, everyone. I move to see if the town will vote to transfer 3,000 from free cash for the purpose of scanning Planning Board subdivision. Approval not required plans as built plans and easement descriptions into electronic format or take any other action in relation thereto.
Second. Second, and Mr. Weeks.
These funds will be used to cover the expense incurred for scanning plans and other municipal documents in electronic format.
Any questions or comments on Article 8? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article 8 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The ayes have it, Article 8 is adopted. Article 9, Chief Thompson.
I move the town vote to transfer 8,500 from free cash to purchase and equip a speed monitoring trailer.
Second. Second, Chief Mix, or Chief Thompson, who wants to take this one?
These funds will be used to replace the speed monitoring trailer that has reached the end of its useful life. Somebody should ask him a question.
We don't want to put the chief to waste here. Any questions or comments?
Hi, how are you? Emir McDonough, 15 West Washington Street. Does that mean we're going to get more speeding tickets?
Your street's one of the reasons I'm asking for this, to be honest with you. We, we have one that's a little over 10 years old. It's, it's met the end of its useful lifespan. It broke down again this year. I brought the people in from Maine that repair our radars and the gentleman, the technician, looked at it and said, "Chief, I think it's done." So if the guy that's going to make money off of fixing it tells us it's done, I believe him it's done. And by the way, they're not on the state bid list for me to buy one from, so I really believe the guy. What this will allow us to do is put that on, it'll monitor the, it has a counter, it'll monitor the vehicles, the average speeds and the times. That would then allow me to put a live officer out there at other times to help with enforcement.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article 9 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it, Article 9 is adopted. Article 10, Chief Thompson.
I move the town raise and appropriate 24,000 for the continued upgrade of the public safety radio repeaters and radio system.
Second, Chief Thompson.
These funds will be used to continue the upgrade of the public safety radio system and repeaters. It will allow for the Hanson Police and Fire to go on their own antenna system independent of a multi-user system controlled by the Commonwealth and county. Also, it will allow for the purchase of additional portable radios to meet the needs of various public safety departments.
Any questions or comments on Article 10? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article 10 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it, Article 10 is adopted. Article 11, Mr. Hanlon.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of 12,000 dollars to purchase and equip a commercial zero-turn radius mower for the Highway Department.
Second. Second, and Mr. Hanlon.
This mower will allow the Highway Department to maintain the town-owned lawns and fields more efficiently. It will replace a 1977 Kubota Tractor and allow us to extend the life of our 2,000 trackless machine.
Any questions or concerns about Article 11? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article 11 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it, Article 11 is adopted. Article 12, Chief Thompson.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to transfer 20,000 from free cash to purchase and equip a portable lighting plant.
Second. Second, and Chief Thompson.
These funds will be used to purchase and equip a portable lighting plant for emergency lighting as well as lighting at town functions and would be available for use by all town departments.
Any questions or concerns about Article 12? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it, Article 12 is adopted. Article 13, Mr. Amato.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to ratify a collective bargaining agree between the Hanson Water Department, Board of Water Commissioners and AFSCME Local 1700 Water Union and further to appropriate 10,814.42 through water revenues to be added to the amount appropriated under May 2, 2016 Annual Town Meeting, Article 5, Line 90 salaries for the purpose of funding the first year of the three-year contract for the period beginning July 1, 2016 through June 30 of 2017.
Second. Second, and Mr. Amato.
This is to fund the salary line for the 700 Water Departments, physical 17 union contract for the first year.
Any questions or comments on this? Mr. Hanlon. I'm sorry, I didn't catch the answer. Could you say it into the mic, please?
Two percent in salary.
Two percent? Mr. Soper.
I want to know why the selectmen held on this and the Finance Committee passed it.
Mr. McGann.
Our numbers show that it was a 4% increase. Are you sure, Mr. Amato?
Yeah, he said in salary line, salary line was 2%.
Our numbers show that there was a 4% increase in this number. So the vote we had.
Cost of living was 2%.
Right?
Cost of living, 2%, salary line was 2%.
I can't hear.
Could you speak up, sir?
Cost of living was 2%, salary line was 2%.
So it's a total 4%.
Total 4%.
Right. So it's a total 4%.
Yes.
So it was a strategic decision on this part. This board just voted earlier today on this item at 7 o'clock. Vote was four to one not to recommend from this Board of Selectmen. Four, zero, one, apologies. Abstain.
Any other questions or concerns?
Do you want to add a minute?
Mr. Mitchell.
The reason why I didn't support this article is because it's, it's not in line with the other unions that we just negotiated back in May. So that's why I didn't support it.
Mr. Amato.
This article is a bargaining agree between the Hanson Water Department and its union. It has nothing to do with the other unions in town. This is the Hanson Water Department and their local union.
Mr. Norton? Oh, I'm sorry.
In my opinion, the increases should be similar. Just my opinion.
Mr. Norton.
A quick question through you to Mr. Amato. He said this was a three-year contract. If the first year is 4%, what are the increases in the subsequent years?
Mr. Amato.
3%.
Is that a total of three or is that the cost of living or?
Cost of living, three and three.
And, and what about salary?
The salary means.
So it's 4, 3, 3.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
I would like to point out too, that the remaining unions received a flat fee of 2% increase. So it pretty much came down to, that was for one year, that's correct, thank you. Came out to be a fairness issue also with myself, I think from most of this board.
Yeah, I will, I will again state, this is a bargaining agree between the Hanson Water Department, Board of Water Commissioners and their union. This union has nothing to do with the other town unions.
Any other questions or comments? Mr. Armstrong.
Yes, Jim Armstrong, 65 Richard Road. Through you to the selectmen. Now, it's been a few years since I was involved in the Select Board, but we actually passed the Town Administrator Act. The Town Administrator was supposed to be in negotiations for all collective bargaining units, including the Water Department. That's what the rule was when I was there. It may have changed, but I'm just asking, has that changed?
Has that changed? Mr. McGann.
No, it has not changed.
Is the Town Administrator involved in the question?
I'm told, no. Okay. So there's two, there's two items that he's not involved in, the School Department and the Water Department.
Yeah, according to the Town Administrator Act, he's not involved in, in the, in the Water Department or the, or the School Department. That's the way it reads.
Any other questions or comments? See, oh, Mr. Hanlon.
Mr. Amato, based on the salaries of the other town, the way that the Hanson Water Department rate at the other town, is this going to come down? Is this more, second, bring them more in line with the work and the drive?
It does, it does not bring them, it brings them probably to a mediocre line with the other.
Again, if you could please speak into the microphone, sir.
It doesn't really get them above any other town. It pretty gets them pretty much mediocre. It's not a, you know, super increase that, you know, it just brings them more aligned trying to.
Gil, I still can't hear you. You're going to have to talk clearly.
Really? Excuse me.
Sure.
It does not bring them above any other town. It just brings them a mediocre line with other towns. I mean, this is, you know, the Hanson Water Department negotiated in good faith with the union and we came up with a good package, we feel it's a good package. I mean, this happens every three years in the Water Department, the Board, you know, the Water Commissioners negotiate the contract with the union. And it's not like, you know, we're trying to give money away. You know, we are a revenue-based, you know, commission and I think we did a good contract and it should, you know, this should fly. I mean, this happens every three years.
And this, you. Mr. McGann.
This contract was negotiated with the Water Commissioners, is that correct?
Yes.
Any other questions or comments?
Sean.
Mr. Santa Lucia, and then I'll come to Mr. Mitchell.
Pepper Santa Lucia, 517 West Washington Street. Frankly, as an outsider to the state and relative newcomer to Hanson, I think 10 years still counts you as a newcomer. The, this gets to a question regarding the whole organization of, of the Town of Hanson's government. I mean, there's boards and commissions for everything and frankly, if, if the Board of Selectmen want to be more involved in how the Water Department and the Commission negotiates with its unions, it should look at consolidating functions, perhaps a Department of Public Works. But I, I tend to agree with this gentleman that they negotiated with their union and we're just here to formalize that. Seems like the, the horse has already left the barn, in my opinion.
I can't think of anything better than a big Department of Public Works argument tonight. Mr. Mitchell.
Let's try not to get into that.
I just think it's going to hurt us when we negotiate with all the other unions. This could potentially hurt us because I think these percentages are outrageous. It's just my opinion.
No.
Mr. Amato.
I have to repeat myself again, you know, not, I mean, I understand, I've been in town a long time, never realized that the union, the Water Department Union was also part of the Highway Department Union and they separated many years ago. But like, I cannot help but keep repeating myself. I've been in town a long time, been on boards a lot of years, but the Hanson Water Commission negotiated in good faith with its local union to come up an agreement that we both agreed on and this is the funding for the first year of the three-year agreement.
Mr. Sears.
Bob Sears of Seven Adams Circle. I agree with Speaker Mrs. Santa Lucia. However, I have a different conclusion in that I've seen it with building construction, I've seen it with the hospital that tear down, now I'm seeing it with my Water Department. It's us, we, ours and that, in the interest of fairness, you can say that we, we came up and negotiated a contract with the union, but the reality of it is, it's us. It's the people in this room that are asking to vote for it and I, as one voter, if the town employees are receiving 2%, that's not going to vote for it. If the town vote, we're going to get 4%, it's 4%.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article 13 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay.
Nay.
I agree, the count is too close to call, so please, if, you could please raise your voting card up, our tellers are going to count. All those in favor of Article 13 signify by saying, by raising your card at this time. Twenty-one.
Seven.
Seven. Twenty-six. All those opposed Article 13, please signify by raising your cards at this time. Fifteen.
Seven.
Seven.
Nine.
Nine. So by a vote of 54 to 31, Article 13 is adopted. Article 14, Mr. Howard. Mr. McLeod.
Mr. Moderator, 54 and 31 comes to 85. I thought you said we had a quorum of 113.
People may not vote. For instance, I did not vote in that last ballot. I am assuming that we still have a quorum. Article 14, Mr. Howard.
I move the town vote to transfer 245,100 from water surplus to pay for water. I move the town vote to transfer $245,100 from water surplus to pay for water purchase from the City of Brockton.
Do we have a second? Second. Mr. Howard?
This is a remainder of the bill owed to the City of Brockton for water purchase during the rehab of the High Street Water Tank.
Do we have any questions or comments about Article 14? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article 14 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay? The ayes have it, Article 14 is adopted. Article 15, Mr. Howard?
To see if the town will vote to transfer $245...
What, $100,000?
Article 14?
15. Article 15?
Oh, I'm 15. I'm on the wrong page.
Okay.
I move the town to vote to transfer $110,000 from water revenues to purchase a new truck for the Water Department.
Do we have a second? Second. Mr. Howard?
This truck will replace the 1996 Ford International... No, the... It's a 1996 International vehicle that is 20 years old and costing the department money for repairs.
Mr. Howard, I believe the correct figure for that motion is $100,000, not $110,000. So if you could redo the motion, please.
Okay. I move the town vote to transfer $100,000 from water revenues to purchase a new truck for the Water Department.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Howard?
This truck will replace the 1996 International vehicle that is 20 years old and costing the department money for repairs.
Any questions or comments? Mr. Soper?
Mr. Moderator, I was wondering if you'd indulge me. I don't have a question on Article 15, but I have a water question.
If it's not on Article 15, I'm going to not have a whole lot of latitude there. But what's your question?
Just looking for an update on the price of what the water tower cost to paint this year. It wasn't in any of the documentation, I was just curious.
That is a bit outside, but do we have the... Do we have a figure for how much the water tower cost? To paint?
To paint it?
Yes.
Chip, you got that figure?
If you could, please.
I think it was 1.3...
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Richard Muncie, Hanson Water Superintendent. It was 1.4.
To paint the water tower?
To paint the water tower.
Mr. Soper?
What was the number originally appropriated at last town meeting for this job?
1.1.
1.1. So you're kind of catching me off guard here.
I understand.
But...
Thank you very much.
Always willing to indulge you, sir. Any questions on Article 15? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article 15 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay? The ayes have it, Article 15 is adopted. Article 16, Mr. Howard?
I move the town vote to transfer from water surplus $50,000 for engineering purposes to update the department's master plan.
Second. Second. And Mr. Howard?
This money will be used to update the Water Department's master plan, which hasn't been done since 2008.
Any questions or concerns about Article 16? Seeing none. Oh! Is there a question? Whoever was pulling my strings didn't get my attention over there.
Very good. All right. First of all, my question's to the Water Superintendent, if you would mind coming to the microphone. How long is this study going to run before it produces results? By tangible results, I mean, heavy-duty updating on the pipes. I know there's a ton of work to be done there, and possibly a new well site.
Sir?
Through you, Mr. Moderator. It's going to give us... It's going to take us four months to give us the direction to go. In other words, it's going to give four... They're going to... It's going to take them four months to evaluate everything in the town that's included in the plan to give us the direction of where we're going. We're already in... We're a step ahead, because we're in the direction of a new well site in the northern part of town. But this is going to encapsulate a little bit of that, plus mostly the distribution system. All right. The reason for my asking is I support the Water Department 100 percent. I think if we look long-term with some of the events going around the country, we realize that the Water Department is really the lifeblood of the town. So I have always and always will vote for anything that these folks need. Right now, I'm concerned that they don't have enough tools to do the job. With this drought that's been with us now for over a year, it could continue for some time in the future. I'm looking forward to upgrading our system, and this master plan is an ideal time to do that. I understand that Crystal Wells... Crystal Springs was running at close to 100 percent. We've known about our water pipes for 20 years. I congratulate the department on the work they've done, but on looking at what there is left to do, they need to take it up a notch. And in order to do that, they're going to need tools. So one of the things I'd like to see in this new... In this new... This new plan is that, number one, that we begin immediately, and I've spoken with the town water engineer, I forget, who's the fellow who works under you? My assistant?
Yes.
Steven Otschbal? Otschbal, thank you. And other folks that would agree that we're behind the eight ball right now, and that we have run at 100 percent of our well field's capacity this summer. So the answer is not a new water tower. I saw that on the 2009 master plan. Certainly, the pipe repairs need to continue, probably at an accelerated rate, but indeed, I think that this master plan needs to show immediately that we need a new water supply. We need to make sure that Brockton water never flows through our pipes again.
I'm going to make sure on that, Mac.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. And that's it. Thank you very much.
Any further comments or questions? Alrighty. A vote for Article 16 is a vote against Brockton water. Good to hear. All those in favor of Article 16 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay? The ayes have it, Article 16 is adopted. Article 17, Mr. Clemmons?
I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $5,000 to replenish the Conservation Fund for open space management and related conservation purposes.
Second. Second. And Mr. Clemmons?
As Chair of the Conservation Commission, I would just draw your attention to the explanation in the warrant. Basically, it's all about not only having open space and land, but managing it. Certainly, we want to permanently protect it, but we want to improve public access, improve the educational information we have on our maps, et cetera. And for the record, the Conservation Commission strives to leverage these funds through grants from state agencies and private sources, volunteer labor, donations, Eagle Scouts, et cetera, et cetera. But sometimes there are unavoidable needs to spend a little bit of money on specialized services such as roof-moving equipment, tree work, or sometimes even small herds of goats. So we invite the voters to support this modest investment in our environment.
Any questions or comments? I think my favorite part of the summer was the goat-scaping that took place in town. All those in favor of Article 17 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay? The ayes have it, Article 17 is adopted. Just want to acknowledge that we've been joined by our state representative, Josh Cutler. Thank you for joining us. Article 18, Mr. Hayes?
I move the town vote to transfer from the amounts appropriated to Article 34 of the October 2014 special town meeting, Indian Head Roof, are available funds in the sum of $132,412 to fund the following school repair projects.
Second. So once again, we have a multi-item article, so I... Oh. Oh. Could you just follow up by saying as printed in the warrant?
As printed in the warrant.
And do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. And so, thank you very much, Madam Clerk. So what I'll do is I'll read the seven items sequentially. If anybody has a question or would like to ask... Has a concern, please say "hold," otherwise we'll deem it accepted. Item 1. Accepted. Item 2. Accepted. Item 3. Accepted. Item 4. Accepted. Item 5. Accepted. Item 6. Accepted. Item 7. Accepted. So if anybody has any questions or comments on the article as a whole? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article 18 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay? Article 18 is adopted. Article 19, Mr. Mitchell?
I move to pass over Article 19.
We have a motion to pass over Article 19. Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay? The ayes have it, Article 19 is passed over. Article 20, Mr. Scott?
I move the town vote to transfer $35,000 from the Recreation Enterprise Fund retained earnings to the amounts appropriated in the May 2016 annual town meeting, Article 7, to fund the position of the Recreation Director.
Second.
Seconded. Mr. Scott?
These funds will be used to fund the position of a Recreation Director for the period of January 1, 2017, to June 30, 2017. This amount includes salary and benefits regarding health insurance also.
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, you're getting ready? I applaud your efficiency.
Yes, ma'am.
My question is that you just asked for $35,000 for a six-month period, so will the total be for the Recreation Director $70,000 salary?
Mr. McGann?
Sorry, Robin Spada-Curren, Monroe Street.
Oh, thank you. Mr. Young?
The six-month period, the salary if it... The salary if the person is hired at the maximum amount that was approved by the town meeting in May, it would be a $50,000 salary. Half of that would be 25, and possible fringes that would go with that would be another $10,000, which would bring it up to $35,000. Okay? But we're not sure what the total salary is. This just puts the funding in place, and then... And then, once the funding is put in place, and the Town Administrator would work with the Recreation Commission to formulate the advertisement, and formulate how many hours that particular individual feels that they would need that individual to carry out the duties of the Recreation Director for the Town of Hanson, and it would be advertised. And then, the Town Administrator would interview those candidates with the assistance of the... One of the members of the Recreation Commission. And then, the candidates for that office would be recommended to the Recreation Commission, and the Recreation Commission would hire that individual. That's the way the process takes place.
Can I just...
Yes.
Does anybody know, like, is this a comparable salary to Whitman Recreation, or a local town that has a Recreation Director?
Mr. Young?
What's that? It's a start. Some of these Recreation Directors that have been around for quite a while, I've looked at a couple of towns. I looked at the town of Bourne, and their salary range is anywhere from 60,000 to 70,000. Okay? Sharon. Maybe these aren't comparable towns, but there are other towns around here that have Recreation Directors, okay? But... But we don't know whether we need the Recreation Director for 30 hours, or 35 hours, or 25 hours. And that will have to be discussed between the Recreation Commission and the Town Administrator, and then the ad put out for that particular position. Does that answer your question?
And... Any other questions?
Yes. No?
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Mr. Weeks?
Joe Weeks, 83 Hancock Street. Through you, Mr. Moderator, to whoever can best answer the question. I'm just curious, how much are in the Recreation Enterprise Fund retained earnings, and is it something we can fund right now? And if not, is it something that, if we can fund it through Recreation, is that going to come out of taxes to pay that salary?
Mr. Young?
This is the... The motion was to fund through the retained earnings account. We have plenty of money in retained earnings to cover that particular... That particular position at this point, so that it won't be funded by taxation. Our intent is not to fund that position by taxation.
And at this moment, I've just been informed that the Enterprise Fund has $85,000 in it before this vote.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions or concerns? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article 20 signify by saying aye. All those opposed, nay?
Nay.
The ayes have it. Article 20 is adopted. Article 21. Oh, yes, please.
My turn now. I'm Kathleen Keith, 515 Indian Head Street, and I'm also clerk of the Board of Assessors. I move to see if the town will vote to accept the provision of Mass General Law, Chapter 60A, Section 1, which governs motor vehicle excise, tax, and exemptions.
Second.
Seconded. Ms. Keith?
This is a local option governing motor vehicle excise, tax, and exemptions for military personnel.
Are there any questions or concerns? Mr. Norton?
Just one quick question, because I'm not familiar with the Mass Law. Is this active-duty military?
So this will allow the implementation of initiative included in the Municipal Modernization Act as it relates to the exemption of motor vehicle excises for POWs. POWs?
POWs?
Right.
What about active-duty military? No?
That may be covered in this act. Whether that's exact, I'm not sure.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Arson, did you have something to add? If you could come to the microphone, please.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Yes, this would include active-duty deployed reservists.
Any other questions or concerns? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article 21 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay? The ayes have it, Article 21 is adopted. Article 22, Mr. McGann? Oh, could you use the microphone? Sorry.
I move the town vote to amend Hanson General Bylaws, Article 3-8, by adding a new Section 7 as follows. All-terrain vehicles on town property. No person shall operate a motorized all-terrain vehicle, snowmobile, dirt bike, recreational vehicle, off-highway vehicle, or other similar motorized off-road utility vehicle, as may be defined under General Law, Chapter 90B, on any town-owned property without the express written permission of the Board of Selectmen. The same prohibition... Excuse me. Shall also apply to golf carts. Operation of any and all such vehicles is also prohibited in the waters of great ponds as defined under Mass General Law, Chapter 91, Section 35. And Item 2, fines for violation of this bylaw. Shall be $100 for the first offense, and $300 for each additional offense. The Selectmen or their designee shall have the authority to issue fines via non-criminal disposition. Fines shall be in addition to any available equitable means of enforcement.
Second.
Seconded. Mr. McGann?
This new bylaw prohibits the use of all-terrain vehicles on town-owned property in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 90B, and 323 CMR 3.0. 3.0, excuse me.
Any questions on Article 22? Mr. Norton?
Getting up here far too often. Putting on my Hanson Historical Society president hat, we have an antique car ride in conjunction with our Fall Fair that runs on the Housing Authority by the base of operations at the old school. Does this impact that in any way?
It shouldn't, but if it did, it wouldn't make a difference that you could get permission from the Board of Selectmen.
And I've been advised by council that... Town Council says that it doesn't meet the definition.
Yeah. Is it four-wheel drive?
No.
Okay. Okay, then I think you might be okay.
Four-wheel drive Model T, that would be something.
It was a bad joke. Sorry, John. Thanks.
Mr. Soper.
David Soper, 176 High Street. How is this going to be enforced? Who’s going to enforce it?
Uh, our police officers, or any recreational police, I think, from those areas, monitor, the park rangers, that type of thing. Police can do it, absolutely.
There is quite a bit of activity on Plymouth County Hospital.
There’s, I’m sorry, there’s.
There is quite a bit of activity up on Plymouth County Hospital, and I’m, it’s constant, so that’s why I’m asking.
Point of information taken. Mr. Lindquist.
Uh, Lindquist, 134 Old Pine Drive. I have a little question of conflict of interest, because town-owned property is a wide thing, and all town-owned property, because the town owns conservation land and just public land. And my feeling is that, uh, the Conservation Commission has jurisdiction over conservation land, it says the way the deeds are generally written, and, uh, if the selectmen thought it was a good idea to allow vehicles to go on conservation land, I guess this would supersede this Conservation Commission thing anything.
I’m not sure I understand. What’s the question, Mr. Lindquist? Was it just a comment? Apologies. What, Phil?
Mr. Clemmons, do you want to, please, if you could, just speak to this point, and then, we’ll, we’ll return to the questions.
Basically, everyone who manages land across the USA, certainly Massachusetts, has been dealing with off-road vehicles for a long time. What we’re looking for is consistency. There are state laws that say, as, as referenced here, that say the same thing, but we would like a local bylaw that clearly states in our own local, uh, in our hands, uh, what the rules are, and, of course, the reason’s twofold. One is liability. If the town owns land and someone is injured, and this has happened, there are people in this room who’ve responded to those situations, uh, one never knows where that will lead in terms of liability and finances, et cetera. The other thing is off-road vehicles cause environmental damage. They have ruined sections of the Bay Circuit Trail on Smith-Nelis-Selsky area. They have ruined hillsides of vegetation, uh, on Smitty’s Bog. What we find we need is, in order to continue to enhance cooperation between the Conservation Commission, Recreation, or any other town, uh, department, and our police department, we just need clear local laws. We put up signs, uh, we trust that the, the police will help us enforce this. Of course, it’s an ongoing effort. Of course, the more we put up signs, the more we take them down, but this will put con, uh, consequences to it, and you probably wouldn’t need to have very many cases of enforcement before the message starts to really get across. But it’s about liability, environmental protection, and appropriate management of our resources, whether it’s Camp Kiwanis, which is under recreation, Smitty’s Bog, which is under conservation, school department property. We just want to have a uniform, uh, policy across the board.
Mr. Clemmons. Mr. McGann.
Mr. Clemmons, am I wrong in saying that some of the town, some of the land that was donated to the town, we are obligated also to protect it as well? Is that correct?
Yes, that’s correct. Uh, Smitty’s Bog, 103 acres of terrific open space, uh, there’s a, a federal deed in place that prohibits us from allowing these things. We’re not allowed to allow this activity.
Mr. Lindquist.
Well, I just want to clarify what I, I stated before, is that, uh, how can you have two people in charge of the same property? Over the, this gives the selectmen the right to decide what should happen on conservation property, and I’m saying that the law says that land under conservation jurisdiction, they’re the ones that say, what can happen? I agree with the purpose of this thing, to enforce it, but who does it, is another question.
I’d like to call on town council to address that point.
It, it’s a good question. Um, the, the selectmen have the authority, as the overall police power in the town, as well as the entity that’s in control of property, to prohibit or allow certain activities. So, the selectmen’s jurisdiction is well-founded to have a ban like this. Let’s be clear, though, if the selectmen say yes to, uh, allowing a four-wheel drive or an off-road vehicle in a conservation parcel that’s controlled by the Conservation Commission, the Conservation Commission still has the authority to say no. So, the fact that they both may have certain jurisdiction over these properties doesn’t mean that there can’t, isn’t room for still some regulation by both entities. My guess, however, based upon the comments we just heard, is that they’ll probably be in lockstep on most of these properties.
Thank you. Mr. Vess.
Through you, Mr. Moderator, uh, to any of the conservation folks, and even the Board of Selectmen. We have a volunteer in our neighborhood who is a landscaper, who routinely, uh, grooms the trails going down through Plymouth County. Uh, he does this with a commercial lawnmower, and nothing dragged by an ATV. I do happen to agree with, uh, removing all recreational vehicles, uh, from these properties. They certainly do cause destruction, but we do have a gentleman who volunteers in keeping that trail open, and he’s done so for some years now, some two and a half years, and I’m wondering if, uh, he would be affected, or he could be continued to do the work that he’s doing, uh, under this law. Thank you very much, and that’s to anybody.
I don’t think it’s a recreational vehicle, if that were the case. I think it would be more, this is more geared toward recreational vehicles, but obviously, it also states in the article that, without the permission of the Board of Selectmen, so it’s possible if there’s a problem there, uh, the Board of Selectmen could take it up, vote on it, and I’m sure they would have no problem with maintaining those roads.
Mr. Clemmons.
I think most of us look forward to a day soon when we actually do a, a pretty good job of managing our properties as opposed to not managing them, and we’re trying to be very clear about how we will do that. What I foresee is that, let’s say, conservation is responsible for a property, if there’s a need for trail maintenance, or any other thing, who knows what it might be, clearing a downed tree, whatever, uh, there could be something very simple, like a memorandum of understanding between the selectmen and the Conservation Commission as to who would be allowed to do what and when, and just have a, a very clear line of communication so that authorized and desirable access can happen, but unauthorized, undesirable action will not happen. I thi, I see that being easy to address.
Thank you. Any other questions or concerns? Are you sure? Okay, you waited for a little bit. Okay. All those in favor of Article 22, please signify by saying “aye.”
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Article 22 is adopted. Article 23, Mr. Young.
I move that the town, uh, I move that the town vote to adopt Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 40, Section 8J.
Seconded. Mr. Young.
This statute establishes a commission on disabilities, which consists of at least five, but not more than nine, members as appointed by the Board of Selectmen to address federal and state disability laws. This, this, um, this would create a new committee, and so, I, I think I need to read you what the, what the consequences of accepting this law are, and then, you can decide whether you wish to accept it, because it’s strictly up to you. You don’t have to accept it, but here’s, here’s what happens if you accept it, okay? Uh, Section 8J, uh, “A town which accepts the provisions of this section at an annual or special town meeting may establish a commission on disability, here and after called the commission, to cause the full integration and participation of people with disabilities in such city or town. Such commission shall research local problems of people with disabilities, two, advise and assist municipal officials and employees in ensuring compliance with state and federal laws and regulations that affect people with disabilities, and, three, coordinate or carry out programs designed to meet the problems of people with disabilities in coordination with programs of the Massachusetts Office on Disability, and, four, review and make recommendations about policies, procedures, services, activities, and facilities of departments, boards, and agencies of said town as they affect people with disabilities, and, five, provide information, referrals, guidance, and technical assistance to individuals, public agencies, businesses, and organizations in all matters pertaining to disability, and, six, coordinate activities of local groups organized for similar purposes, and that’s it. So, you have a choice here. You can either continue having the, uh, town administrator, who wanted the Town Administrator Act, coordinate, coordinates the American with, Americans with Disabilities Act under the federal and state statutes, or you can take it one step further and adopt Chapter 40, Powers and Duties to Cities and Towns, Section 8J, Disability Commission, powers and duties, members, uh, on those terms. That’s up to you. You wish to add another layer of government to this, uh, stand pat with the way we have it now, okay?
Mr. Handland, if you could, I know you’re nice of a talk.
Mr. Moderator, if we were to accept this, will this law suddenly comply with the American, Americans with Disabilities Act, and what cost would that be to the town?
No, you’re already forced to comply with the American with Disabilities Act.
But by, by accepting this law, there are some, there are some areas in town that are exempt. Sidewalk 58 were planned out through before the AGA Act was passed, which is for now, and what we have to comply with?
My understanding is no. I’m being told by town council that this purely creates a commission.
My wife’s a wheelchair, I would love to see done by, it would be a huge expense to the town, how great is that decision?
Well, any other questions or comments? Ms. Demasio.
Through the moderator to selectman Young. It sounds like, uh, this sounds like a very good idea, and the selectmen voted 5 to 0, but in your presentation, it seems like you’re against it, so I’m just trying to.
No, I’m just saying that you have your choice. I’m just telling you what your choice is. I’m the, I’m for it. I voted for it.
That’s what I thought, but I got the other feeling from listening.
No, it does, it does add, it does add another committee. It adds another commission, so if you wish to do that, and, and have that, have that commission operate exactly the way I, I told you about it, uh, go right ahead. Do it.
Mr. McGann.
I think it’s because he’s too close to the mic. Step back, brother.
All right. Any other questions or comments on Article 23? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article 23 signify by saying “aye.”
Aye.
All those opposed, nay.
Nay.
The ayes have it. Article 23 is adopted. Article 24, Mr. Howard.
I move the town vote to accept Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 40, Section 22G.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Howard.
The statute authorizes the funds received from fines for handicap parking violations to be allotted to the Commission on Disabilities.
Any questions or concerns? Mr. Norton.
Sorry to keep doing this. Uh, where are the funds presently, the fines presently allocated?
I’m being told by the town administrator it goes to the general fund.
Thank you.
Any other questions or concerns? Seeing none. Article 20, all those in favor of Article 24 signify by saying “aye.”
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Article 24 is adopted. Article 25, Mr. Scott.
I move that the town vote to amend the Town of Hanson general bylaws, Article 2-19, Parks and Fields Commission, by adding to the end of the first paragraph in Section 1 the following: One member of the Board of Selectmen may serve as an ex officio, officio, a member of Parks and Field Commission.
Seconded.
Mr. Scott.
This amendment basically allows a member of the Board of Selectmen to serve on the commission and actually be a non-voting member.
Any questions or concerns about Article 25? Please come to the mic.
Jack Wade, 30 Phillips Street. Isn’t Kenny on Parks and Fields now?
Mr. Mitchell.
Yes. I’m the Board of Selectmen liaison to the Parks and Fields Commission.
Okay. What, what would be the purpose of having one of the Board of Selectmen on Parks and Fields? Well, how would that help?
Uh, I’d like to defer to.
Ladies and gentlemen, Bob Hayes, 80 Green Grove Lane, I’ve been on Parks and Fields for approximately 20 years. Many members of the Board of Selectmen have been on Parks and Fields, and they come down Sunday morning with their own equipment, with their own lawnmowers, and they help mow fields that the town can’t afford to mow. Anybody that wants to come down should be allowed to come down. This is a volunteer group doing volunteer things that are great for the children of the Town of Hanson, so I don’t think we should bar anyone because they’re a selectman, a water commissioner, a school employ, anyone should be allowed to do this. We need more volunteers, not less.
Any other questions or concerns? Mr. Blouse. Oh, I’m sorry. Oh, very good. Any other questions or concerns? Thank you. Uh, all those in favor of Article 25, please signify by saying “aye.”
Aye.
All those opposed, nay.
Nay.
The ayes have it, according to my ears, but if somebody would like to challenge, Oh, we have a motion for a count. So, all those in favor of Article 25, please signify by holding your cards up high. 26. 35. 35.
14.
14. All those opposed to Article 25, please signify by raising your cards now.
2.
2.
2. 11.
11. I was going to say, it didn’t sound like four people. By a count of 75 in favor to 15 in the negative, Article 25 is adopted. Article 26, Mr. Mitchell.
I move the town vote to amend the Town of Hanson general bylaw, Article 2-1, general provisions governing all departments, board committees, commissions, and elected offices, Section 15 by deleting subsection A, B, C, D, and replacing the last sentence of the first paragraph, which presently states, “This bylaw shall provide that with the following: The procedures to be followed in the implementation of this bylaw shall be those procedures contained within GLC 40, Section 57, as may be amended, as printed in the law.”
Seconded.
Mr. Mitchell.
This is a housekeeping article. The town accepted MGL, Chapter 40, Section 57, on May 22nd, 1986. In May 1991, town meeting established a bylaw reflecting the verbiage, the exact verbiage of the state statute. However, amendments have been made to the statute creating a disparity between bylaw and the statute.
Just a personal note, as someone who used to write state statutes, I hate to hear it called verbiage, but... Any questions or concerns about this article? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article 26 signify by saying “aye.”
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Article 26 is adopted. Article 27, Mr. McGann.
I move the town vote to have an elected committee, known as the Memorial Field Trustees, become a committee appointed by the Board of Selectmen, such vote being conditioned upon passage of the voters at the next annual town election.
Seconded. Mr. McGann.
For several years, many of the elected positions of the trustees of Memorial Fields have been unfilled. Many times, no one takes out nomination papers for the open seats resulting in writing candidates who are elected by very few votes and are unwilling to serve. The Parks and Fields Commission has taken over the maintenance and scheduling of activities of this field. Currently, there are two vacancies on the trustees of Memorial Field.
Any questions or concerns about Article 27? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article 27 signify by saying “aye.”
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Article 27 is adopted. Article 28, Mr. Young.
Mr. Moderator, I move that we pass over Article 28.
Seconded. There’s a motion to pass over Article 28. It has been seconded. All those in favor... All those in favor of passing over Article 28 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Article 28 is passed over, and with that, I adjourn town meeting.